Meeting, Council Chambers, Thursday, March 31st, 2016. It is a little bit after 6:00 PM. I want to apologize, we had some technical difficulties with the sound equipment. Agenda item number two, roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clemmons.
Present.
Counselor Estrada.
Excused.
Counselor Banna.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Excused.
Counselor Vecchia.
Excused.
Bye, President.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Agenda item number three, consider and accept counsel of the whole meeting minutes of Wednesday, March 9th, 2016. Second. Do we have discussion? Yep, okay, here we go. Counselor Banna.
I'll be abstaining from this vote, I was not present at that meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Well, it does, it does note, it does say that she was there and not there, so just, that needs to be corrected. And also, I just wanted to clarify that when I was talking about small business owners, I meant that, I was specifically talking about the idea of trying to bring up small business ideas from within the community itself, and try to, try to find ideas that are already out there that may not, that may not be yet known. That's what I was thinking of specifically.
Okay.
And also, minor, a minor correction in the last, second to last paragraph, Marguerite means, that should be Margaret Morrison.
Margaret. Okay. Counselor Clemmons?
Thank you. The paragraph where it starts, Counselor Clemmons expressed that right now South Street is illegal, that is not the context of that paragraph, it's, the re, it refers to the paragraph before where Mr. Town Manager San Angelo mentioned South Street and the bad shape that it's in. I mentioned the reason it is in such bad shape is because of the detour on West Main Street over the bridge. Many of the large trucks are going down South Street, which is causing more damage to the road. We did state that, I had stated that we, I'd spoken with the state rep, in hopes that he could push that project along. It is in the queue with DOT to be done, but has not been awarded yet to get that bridge replaced, so that one of our major egresses to the town is, is back in full operating order, and we don't have to put the trucks on River Street and on South Street. Just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Counselor O'Clair.
I'm sorry. It says that, Counselor O'Clair states that in regard to liquor licenses, the town is at its quota, she also explained that A, B, C, C will review case by case basis for wine and beer. It should say non-transferable licenses, where actually, those are actually full beer, wine, and liquor licenses, but they're non-transferable, they're kind of a different thing than the town quota is at. And I also mentioned, I think in that same paragraph, that the wine and beer, that there are at least one wine and beer and cordial licenses available in town halls.
Thank you. We will make those corrections through these minutes. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries. Before we continue, I would like to honor our country with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the body of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our town manager. Agenda item number four, presentation of the fiscal year 2017 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank the board for making sure that this was a televised, open meeting. Obviously, this is one of the most important town council meetings, we're representing the fiscal budget for the year, so I want to thank you for that. I want to start off talking about, before I actually get into the meat of the budget and what we're going to be presenting, I want to explain a little bit about the process in developing the budget itself. First, there's a lot of department heads that are here with me in this room that have worked extremely hard putting this budget together. I send out a memo to all department heads, asking them to begin the process of putting together a budget for fiscal year 16, 17, and it's their job to start the budget process by looking at all their current expenses and seeing what the needs of their individual departments are going to be for the upcoming year. The department heads do the bulk of the work upfront, they start setting their priorities, their needs, and the memo that went out to them, I want the general public to understand, said, "Keep your budget flat." Now, what does that mean? That means that you're not allowed to increase your budget in any of the line items, with the exception of potential salary line items, because those are to be negotiated. And I want to compliment all my department heads, we keep asking them to do more with less, and that's essentially what we did again this year, said, "You don't have any, you can't increase budget, you can't increase staff, you essentially have to do with what you did last year, and you're going to see in this budget that they're actually going to do with less than what they did last year in terms of most of the departments." I also want to thank our school system, the state officials involved, Ventura and our interim school superintendent, for working closely with me to try to put together a budget for the school system that works as well. There was a tremendous amount of cooperation that went throughout the town and the school system in putting together tonight's budget, so I want to show my appreciation to them as well. The last person I want to thank is a person that probably works the hardest on this budget is our town accountant. Our town accountant spends endless hours working on the budget and trying to put together a budget that makes good fiscal sense, and it has integrity and something that the town can live with, so I appreciate Karen's work on this budget as well. So tonight is a presentation. It's a presentation, frankly, in a lot of ways about what our vision is for this community and what we can do, frankly, to move forward, and at the same time, this budget really talks a lot about fixing problems of the past. So you're going to see that as we go through this. What's nice tonight is we have some new technology, where people at home are going to be able to see clearly on the screen behind you a budget presentation, so those people at home are going to see this budget, frankly, probably better than the people in this room are going to be able to see it, so I think that's really great. But tonight is not a debate about the budget, it really isn't a debate, it's really for me to present it, the next step is going to go is, I've met with every department head, we've analyzed every line in this budget, and we came to recommendations that I'm bringing forward tonight. The next step of this process, it will, the, we are giving the budget books out to the town councils night, tonight, and the information as well, the next step is, this budget will go to subcommittees of the town council, who will actually start reviewing, once again, every department budget, and eventually, they're going to come out with a recommendation of their own to present to the public, and they're going to actually vote on a full final town budget. So there's a lot of steps in this process, a lot of review, and if citizens have comments, they can go to the subcommittee, or they can make comments to individual council members about what they think should happen in this budget. So your voice is important, and please express those opinions out to our council members, they would love to hear from you. So we're going to start, this is the presentation for 2017 budget. This budget really is about responsible fiscal management, and I'm going through the slides so you can kind of follow along with me. A big part of this budget is being responsible for setting up fiscal policies that actually make sense, that we can all live with, that the town accountants and auditors and everybody can review, and citizens feel really meet the needs of our community. This budget's really about controlled government spending, we don't have a lot of money here in Southbridge. This is a very frugal budget in terms of what it does. As I said, the departments, you're going to see real cuts in real dollars, not real cuts from proposed budget, but real cuts from actual last year's budgets. Really, what the budget's about, as I started off, is meeting the needs of citizens, and that's what this budget attempts to do. And it doesn't meet any extravagant needs, it meets the requirements of what we need to continue to function and to provide quality services to the citizens of the town. Now with that, is what I refer to as a vision statement, what is our vision for the future? I want to read it clearly. "Southbridge must be fiscally responsible, have a budget in place that meets the needs of its citizens, and the vision to look strategically at the long-term infrastructure of the community." That's what this budget is looking at, it's not really, this budget is really not even about the short term in some ways, but how we set up to deal with some problems of the future that we all are very aware are coming down the road. The goals and objectives of this budget, this first goal and objective is the most important thing in this budget. The town has been using $850,000 of one-time revenue each year, it's called free cash, and we've been using it to fund the operating expenses of the town. Think of this as the equivalent of your grandmother giving you $250 this month, and you going out and buying a car with it, hoping that it's going to come back every month. Not real good fiscal policy, but that's what free cash is, it's a one-shot revenue, maybe next year we'll get it, maybe next year we won't, so we can't base continuous expenses off of one-time revenue. This budget is all about fixing that problem. Maintain current town services with little or no increase, and you're going to see, in almost all of our town departments, little or no increase, in fact, you're going to see some reductions. Prepare the town to meet the challenges of the future. I've heard routinely how we need to get off the casella funding or the landfill funding for the future. This budget prepares us to do just that in the future, so that in the future, we can make a decision, a reasonable decision, if that landfill should stay open or should it close, but we need to be in a responsible fiscal position to be able to make that decision. So this sets us up to start preparing for that. Provide reasonable funding to our school district that allows them to improve the quality of education to our children and to improve the reputation of our town. We all understand the struggles that our school system is going through, and we all recognize that they need resources. Now, the balancing act here is, yes, they need resources, but we have to do it at a price that citizens of Southbridge can afford, so this is a difficult balance, so this budget attempts to do that. Balance the needs of both and try to make progress in the school system. This is where the school system, I and the state have had a lot of discussions about this particular budget. In developing a capital improvement plan that utilizes free cash in a responsible and appropriate manner, that means you use one-time revenue to pay one-time expenses. So if you need a new truck, if you need some kind of capital improvement, you need to fix a roof, you should be using one-time revenue to pay for that. By freeing up free cash, we'll no longer have to go out and borrow money for those capital items, we'll be able to buy them out of the box. This will save citizens money in terms of interest on long-term capital borrowing, so this is a real positive for the town, to get off the situation where we have to borrow money for things we shouldn't have to. Now, today's situation is just this, the town currently is using that $850,000 of free cash to balance its operating budget. This is poor financial practice anywhere throughout the state, as a matter of fact, our governor right now is trying to do the same thing, get off of using one-shot revenues for long-term expenses, so this is a priority of any town or any state that is trying to improve their budget process, because if we don't do it, this has a real long-term financial negative impact on our community. The utilization of free cash has put us in a situation where we had to borrow funds and pay interest for one-time capital improvements, that should be paid from this short-term revenue, this is just what I just said, but last year, we went and borrowed money for capital improvements, now we're going to have to pay back not only the money, but the interest that we borrowed on it. If we use free cash in the right way, it's going to save taxpayers' long-term funds as it relates to borrowing. This is when I talk about the future, this is the issue of the future, the town currently utilizes over $3.8 million of landfill revenues to either fund operating expenses or special projects. This is an unreliable long-term revenue, source of revenue to the community. When the landfill closes, this will have a devastating impact on the town if we don't start dealing with it soon. The revenue source also, as I said, it holds us hostage to expansions at the landfill, if we, if we need the revenue, all of a sudden, you know, we're more likely to support an expansion because we need the money, right? So we need to get off of that source of funding. Now, I want to talk a little bit about state funding, because this is important to our budget, and I want to express my appreciation to our governor, who actually funded our Chapter 70 money, which is our education funds, and I think it was about a 3% increase, the growth of our state funds. So you're seeing Cherry Street receipts, in total money we got from the state this year above last year is $753,000, of which most of it is the money that is directly for our schools through what is called Chapter 70 funding. So $638,063 is money that's designed to go towards education of the money we got. Unrestricted general fund money or money for other types of things, grants that we get from the state, that's about $139,000. Then also, we lost some revenues we got from the state in past years, very minor adjustment of about $24,000. So we did pretty well in terms of state revenues this year. Now here, you're looking at the revenues, and the first line is going to be the line we're going to talk about a little bit later, you're going to see property tax levy at 3.75%, and I'm going to go more into detail later on that, so I know that's important, and I know that people want to hang on that, but, but let me explain that more in detail and so you can understand it. I highlighted the ones in yellow that are important, you'll see the Cherry Street revenue that I just talked about, it's about a 3.23% growth rate in state funding, and you'll see it broken down with the Chapter 70 and the unrestricted revenue that we get of $139,000. In red, though, you'll see the issue in 2016, you'll see in red the number $850,000. That is one-time revenue that has been in our budget in 2016. As a matter of fact, in 2013, it was $967,000 of free cash used to fund our budget. You'll see that now in 2017, that money disappears, because we're no longer going to use that money to fund our operating budget. That's the big, big change in this budget. You'll also see down here, a line that says landfill royalty. In 2015, that was $1,000,001, Kevin Pecos in his time here reduced it to $950,000. This is getting off of the landfill revenue. I've reduced it here just by $30,000, so now we have $920,000. Again, this is one portion of the landfill revenue. This is our problem next year. So write it down, because this is, if we're going to get off the landfill money, this is going to be our issue next year. How do we get $950,000 of revenue to make up for what will be this lost revenue? All right? So this is not a short-term problem, this is something we're going to have to deal with over the next, probably, four to five years, in trying to deal with this issue of landfill royalties. Other local receipts, you'll say this is money we get from ambulance fees and licenses and permits, it's a whole bunch of money, that went up $321,000, so that was some pretty good revenue growth on that side as well. Now, we're going to look at some of the bigger issues, and again, I've highlighted the important things on the expense side of the budget, so you saw the money coming in, now this is the money going out. You'll see that, under schools, you'll see a school choice assessment. This is the issue that I think most citizens in town are very aware of, we're leaving, losing students to other communities, so students that were in the Southbridge School District are now going to Stirbridge or other parts of that district. You'll see that right now, we are using, I want to say, it's about, in 17, we're going to be using $1,492,000 of Southbridge money is leaving Southbridge to go to educate children, Southbridge children in other communities, right? That's an increase of this year, this year's budget, about $190,000. That's not any choice that we can make, that's just the cost of it, it's a state law, school choice is there, really, we have zero control over that, unless we can somehow encourage families to keep their kids here in town and put that money back into our school district versus some other school district, right? You'll also see town operating. Town operating in yellow, and it says includes solar credits, that's all my town departments, that's the Public Works, the police, the fire, that's all the basic town departments with the exception of education. You'll see that the town budgets combined, all of them, go down 1.23%. It's a decrease in real dollars over last year. Now, I do want to highlight that that does not include, this particular number does not include pay raises for police, fire, or non-union employees, because those things are under negotiations at this point in time. But you'll see that in real dollars, the departments are actually going down, so we've made a lot of effort, and this is where I'm praising department heads, they're doing more with less. That's the hard numbers that they're dealing with. Down to group health and life insurance, that's the healthcare costs that are rising all across our country. You'll see that healthcare costs are going up 7.69%, it's another one of those things that frankly is out of our control. Last year, by reorganizing, reorganizing healthcare, we were actually able to reduce the increase last year, but this year, we've got our rates from Maya, and it is what it is, we have to pay for the increase of costs of health insurance, and, and the employees themselves also pick up some part of those costs, but this is our cost to the town. Retirement, you'll see an increase there of about 4%, about $118,000, that's our contribution to our retirement account, this is the difference from last year to the year before, and part of that money, I believe, goes to the unfunded liability portion of that. So this is an issue, we talked about it at a recent town council meeting, but this is not only funding our current expenses for the retirement account, but the fact that we didn't fund the retirement account fully many years ago, we're kind of paying for the sins of the past, but quite frankly, everybody had the same sin, because this was happening everywhere. It's a change in the accounting of how you need to manage pension accounts. Debt service, you'll see that went up about 90 grand, as I, as you recall, I said that last year, we borrowed some money to do capital items, over a million, about $900,000,000 that we utilized to borrow, to pay for things like trucks and things. That is going to raise our debt service by about 90 grand. If we start paying things from free cash, we will no longer have to make added debt services for new capital items. Southbridge Public Schools, you'll see a number, it's an increase, it says 2% of $513,395. That's a 2% increase, but I want to clearly kind of point this out, that that's an increase in spending ability, but not necessarily the town giving them the full $500,000,000. The reason for that is, is that before I came into town, Kevin worked with the school system and set up this new solar program, that solar program is going to save the school system about $100,000. So they're going to get the $400,000, $100,000 less, but they'll also save $100,000 in their expense side of the budget, because all their electricity bills will be lower. So they're going to net out that $413,395,000. So they're not getting a full 2% increase in terms of real dollars, but they're getting a 2% in new spending authority. School reduction in, in the, this is the expense to the solar credits, that's the $100,000 right underneath it, that's what I was just talking about, that's the $100,000 in savings because of the energy savings the schools are going to be receiving. You'll see that the total expense side of the budget is only going up less than 2% at Now, school funding, I want to kind of point out here, the total cost of the education system, I told you about the 2%, so that's part of a big part of how we fund the school system, but there's some other costs that the taxpayers give to the school system that pay for other kinds of costs. Okay? There's the solar credits I talked about, the school choice assessment, so we're paying $513,000 less $100,000, but then you add $190,000 of school choice, that's gone up 14.66%. So that tells you we're losing a considerable amount of students to school choice. But there's some additional school funding that most people don't sort of see, that doesn't go directly to the schools, the town pays these bills, and I'm going to define those a little bit later, but it's things like healthcare costs and pension costs, the town pays that directly from the town funds, not from the school funds, but it's worth about $154,000. So our total school expenses in this year are about $758,000, that's going to be added to our budget in school-related issues across the board. This note is really just talking about, it's 2% in new spending, this relates to the fact that they're not getting 2% in real dollars because of those energy savings and the electricity Now, analysis of the education expenses on the town side of the budget, this is that $154,000 that I told you were expenses that kind of don't go directly to the schools, health insurance is about $117,000, an increased cost to the town, workers' compensation, a little over, almost $6,000 to the town, property and liability insurance, almost $6,000 to the town, another, almost $25,000 to the town in pension funds, for a total of another $154,000. So in that $700,000 calculation I showed you, this is that $154,000 of other spending. So I kind of wanted you to have the whole picture of what the schools get and how it's funded, and you'll see, this is about $100,000 of contribution from the town side of government towards schools, and most of the rest of it is related to that increased revenue we got from the state for Chapter 70 funds. So our town contribution really is going to be a little bit over $100,000 in town-side contribution that goes towards the school system. Okay? Now, this is the town operating budget, and I wanted to show you this, because this shows all the individual departments, and if you look at the changes between fiscal year 15 and 16, or 16 and 17, you're going to see that almost all of those are negative numbers, they're small negative numbers, but very low numbers in effect for each of the departments, most of them going down. Now, one small department that actually went up is the election department, and the reason the elections went up is because we have more elections this year, we have the presidential elec, the presidential election this year, so the cost of running elections is a little bit more, but it's small dollars, but it looks like a high percentage increase. So that's one area where you're going to see some additional growth. Another issue in this budget is in the, the, I want to see the right name for it, but the inspectors, the exposition, the inspections department. I brought forward the concept of reappointing our current commissioner, and there was a lot of talk about going to a full-time position at the town council meeting. This budget reflects the addition of a full-time position. I think all of us recognize that we have massive amount of multifamily houses that need inspection, we have a lot of blight in town, we have a lot of issues to deal with in terms of improving those properties, and town council rightly thought that we need to deal with that issue, it's too important to let it go by. I frankly, had told all my department heads, there's no new positions in this budget, so after discussion with the town council at the meeting, and the priority they set on trying to improve our town and clean up those properties, this budget, inspections budget reflects a full-time position as described. Now, in order to do that, to keep taxes down, I reduced the secretary, a secretary position from full-time to part-time. So that's a debate I think you may have in subcommittee about, you know, what do you want to do with that situation? Do you want to keep a full-time inspector? Do you still want to keep a full-time secretary? This budget reflects part-time, but if the council feels that it's important to go back to a full-time secretary, that's something we should and will probably discuss in the subcommittee level. Okay? But I did want to reflect what I thought strongly with the opinions that I received that night at the town council, to make sure the budget reflected what I think was your intention that night. Now, expenses, there's some expenses that frankly, we don't have any control over, there are fixed expenses that kind of come to us that we can't do anything really about. Part of that is group health and life insurance, as you see, it went up by 7.69%, property and casualty went up, or actually, went down a little bit, workers' comp went up almost 6%, unemployment pretty much stayed the same, retirement went up by 4%, and debt went up by 3.25%. These are things that frankly, they are what they are, I don't have a lot of choice when I put them in the budget, they're fixed expenses that are controlled by other people outside of the town, their rates that we get from the insurance companies, that kind of thing, sort of like getting your own insurance bill, it goes up, and unless you're canceling a policy, there's not a real lot you can do. We do shop these things around every so many years to make sure that we get the cheapest rates possible, we just did that with our group health and, health insurance, to be able to save money. I think many of those guys did a great job last year, Kevin, working to reduce those rates, and I think there was no rate increase last year, very low, and this year, we are seeing him climb up again. This is a nationwide reflection of what's going on with health insurance costs. Now, this is obviously the thing that most people care about, this is the tax rate impact and what it's going to do. Now, last year, the town decided not to raise taxes. Now, that's a little bit confusing, because some people, when they opened up their bills, they saw their taxes were a little bit higher or lower. That really had nothing to do with the tax rate, we didn't raise any additional money beyond what we did last year, with the exception of a small adjustment for a Bay Path exemption that we had to do, that was voted on, and it was really a minor impact, but most people, a lot of people saw a decrease in their taxes last year, but some people, particularly single-family homeowners, saw slight increases, not because the tax rate went up, but because of the value of their property went up. But essentially, the town didn't collect any new revenues than it did the year before. Now, you'll see that this year, to raise the money we need to do to fix our free cash problem and to fund our schools at a reasonable rate, the tax increase shows their gross increase, a property, a projected tax levy is 3.75%. Now, we've also been, I guess, lucky enough, although I'd love this number to be a lot higher, is we had some new growth, about $200,000 of new growth. That means people built on additions to their homes, or porches, or things that added more value to their home. So if you take out that new gray, growth from the budget, taxpayers are generally going to see about a 2.67% increase. Now, as you know, you know, there's this thing called Proposition Two and a Half, that says you, you aren't supposed to raise taxes by over two and a half, and that's true, but that counts for every year. Last year, because we raised taxes zero, we can use some of what we didn't use last year this year, we're allowed to do that under state law. Frankly, one of the things that I would have liked to see, quite frankly, is an increase in taxes by 1% last year, and spread out the tax increase over numerous years, but that was not what was chosen to be done. So taxpayers got a really nice break last year in that there were no tax increase, but a little bit, a little bit of that's going to hit this a little bit of that's going to hit this year to resolve the problem. Now, you can debate if it was good to do no taxes this year and a little bit more, zero taxes last year and a little bit more this year, or raise taxes last year a little bit and do less this year. It's all debatable, but the bottom line is, had you cut this tax increase, it would have been less than 2% each year for the last two years if we split it in half, right? So we chose to do it the way we chose to do it, and I think taxpayers appreciated last year, and it kicks them a little bit more this year, but it's not a significantly larger increase. As I said, the net after growth is really only about 2.67%. Now, the future, because this is really what this budget does. This budget is designed to set us up for the future, to protect the town fiscally in the long term. The reason that I didn't add any money to all my different town departments, with the exception of education and fixing the problem, is because I know that the future before us is going to be a difficult one. Truthfully, I really wish that when I came here, you guys handed me a budget that had lots of extra money in it, their revenues were going crazy, there was a lot of growth in town, that I could not raise taxes. That's what I would love to have gotten when I got here, but that's not the situation. We have difficulties and we have issues to deal with, so we're going to deal with them in a fiscally prudent way. So if the town moves forward with this plan to reduce our reliance on the free cash in this year's budget, we'll have a stable budget in place. So now, we're using consistent revenues to pay for consistent expenses, right? By doing that, will allow us to be able to tackle the issue of reducing our need to rely on the landfill royalties in the future. So what I'm saying here is, once we have a fiscally stable budget, we can then look at trying to get off of the reliance of the Casella money or the landfill money going in the future. All right? So there's some difficult choices to be made. There's nothing fun about this budget, but it's setting us up to do the right thing over the long term. This, I think, is critical. For all those people who think we should close the landfill, this is what you should want to happen, because there's no choice here, folks. If we're going to get off the money, there's a payment to be made for getting off of this so-called free money. Okay? Now, once the town is no longer dependent on the landfill revenues, we can then be in a better position to determine if the landfill should stay open or be permanently closed, right? We're no longer reliant on that money in our budget. It's easier to say, "Close the landfill," because it's not a huge problem for our budget. So let's assume the landfill closes tomorrow. Where would we make up those millions of dollars of revenue? Frankly, I don't know how we could do that in a single year. That's why we need to start working on this and adjust and start billing that at a slow rate versus all of a sudden, there's a fiscal calamity in town where the landfill closes, and we have no way to deal with it, right? So that's the purpose of what we're trying to do here. Now, free cash, this is what I want to talk about, and I keep harping on this because this is so critical. If you want to get off the Casella money, we got to fix this problem first. Free cash will now be utilized for one-time capital projects. This over the long term is going to save, again, save taxpayers' money from not having to borrow. We don't want to go out and borrow funds that we don't need to because we have to pay interest on that money. It's cheaper and a better savings to taxpayers when you can use extra money. We have a good year of us, and people are buying a lot of cars, generates a lot more excise tax. We use that money to buy one-time things, it saves the town money. And that's what this should be about. How do we protect the long-term interests of the town, save money and not have to borrow for things we don't need to? It also has a huge benefit that the more fiscally responsible we are, the more it improves our bond rating. With Moody's and other bond companies, that allows us, when we do have to borrow for a big project, as if we were going to build a school or build a new department, then when we go there, because our budget is solid and fiscally responsible, our bond rating is higher, and we can borrow at a lower interest rate. So you want to have a stable budget because it really can save the town money in all different types of ways. That's frankly, the summary of the budget tonight, and frankly, it's not an exciting budget. It's a budget that's fiscally prudent, that I think will be responsible for the town. Mr. Chairman, I know that this is going to be deliberated in the subcommittees. I know it's a difficult job before all of you in making these decisions. These are my recommendations. I hope you take them to heart, but again, the final decision on this budget process is before you guys, and I will do everything I can, and my department's heads are a resource to you in any way possible, to support your efforts. And if you have any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Before we move on to Agenda Item Number Five, question and answer period, I just want to make a statement that we are not here to debate the budget. It's simply questions in regards to tonight's presentation. So if you have a question into a category that's being used, or something that's being, that he mentioned, we will take those questions. But we are not going to debate line items, we're not going to go in and debate those things. Those things will be discussed at subcommittee levels, where each subcommittee chair will be able to sit down and pick the meeting and digest the budget like it's done every year. So with that being said, do I have anybody in the audience, or even counselors, that would like to have asked any questions tonight? Okay, there's several. Counselor Mano.
It's just a comment. I want to thank the town manager for the presentation, and I also want to thank you for mentioning the fact, with the no increase on the taxes, we put ourselves in position quite a few years ago by not increasing taxes, and the town was hit all of a sudden, boom. And so I want to thank you very much for recognizing that and bringing that out in the open, and, you know, bringing that to the residents' attention, and our attention as well.
I appreciate it, and thank you very much. I'm looking forward to working with you and other counselors to work through these problems. Listen, they're not easy, and I appreciate that you guys are going to have to make some difficult choices, so I'll do everything I can to support those difficult choices. But as you say, we have to deal with reality, so thank you.
All set, Counselor Mano?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Steves.
Thank you. I had a couple of quick questions.
If you just speak a little louder, Gus.
Okay, I did have a couple of quick questions. Couple of your lines here talk about, specifically refer to the solar credits, and I was, one of the concerns that I'm, obviously I'm in favor of the solar credits, because we've got the projects already underway to some degree. But what happens if the state doesn't improve the solar cap?
The state is what?
If the state doesn't hike the solar cap, how does that affect us?
Solar cap?
Yeah.
So this had no impact on this year's budget. This year's budget, the solar exemptions are fine going forward. But the issue you're talking about, the solar contract that I'm still negotiating is completely separate than this budget. That will be new revenue to the town if it goes forward. None is being calculated here because that deal is not done. We don't know if that, as you say, we don't know if that solar cap will go off or not. But I'm hoping, and frankly, it's going to take a while to construct and ever see that revenue. So if there's revenue, my guess is that will be more in next year's budget than this year's budget.
Okay.
If I may also, just for clarification, any of the solar projects that we have in place now, stay there. Even if the state doesn't raise the cap, it's moving forward, we're not going to be able to negotiate new solar farms or solar projects if the state doesn't move forward.
Correct. The chairman is correct, and just one other comment because I intended to make it in my presentation. I want to be really clear, in the discussions I had with the state and with the interim superintendent, they came before it. My recommendation is considerably less than what they're asking for. And you'll see in the budget that they presented you tonight, it's about $600,000 above my recommendation. So we're going to have some further discussions in subcommittee then. As we all understand, we are in receivership, and we've got serious issues. So the school system is trying to meet all of those needs. This is not meeting their needs in terms of what they've asked for. But as again I said in my presentation, this is as much as I think we can afford in terms of the budget. But I do know that they are going to have some discussions about requesting some further dollars, and that will be a policy decision that I've explained to them would be left to you. I understand, and I want to make it clear, I understand their needs. I really do. I support so much of what they're doing, having served on the local stakeholders group. The question isn't, do they need it? The question is, can we afford it? That's a debate and discussion we'll have, Gus, in your committee, to discuss the education budget. But I do want to make note that there's still work to be done on that education budget, and I appreciate, you know, they started off, I'm going to be honest with you, they started off $1,004,000 above my number. And right now, it's 600 above my number. So they are making cuts, changing priorities, they are working really hard at trying to come to meet us, and I have some ideas how maybe we can work with them to help them more. But we'll talk about that when we get back into the detailed subcommittee portion, okay? So I just wanted, I know the state official is here, and our interim superintendent is here, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, because you will look in their budget, you're going to see it's significantly more than what I recommended.
Okay, thank you. I did have a couple of other quick questions. Also, you have a line here for special articles. What exactly is that?
For what?
You have a line here labeled as "special articles." What exactly is that?
Karen, I'm going to ask you to come up on that "special articles" line, because I know that's something that you've looked at, but I'm not familiar with that particular line.
Where is that?
Halfway down the town operating budget. Labeled "special articles." I have no idea what that is.
Counselor, can you just tell me which schedule is it that you're referring to?
It's on a page labeled "just town operating budget" with all the various departments and stuff. Most of them I recognize, I just didn't know what "special articles" was, that's all.
That is mostly made up of ambulance billing.
Oh, okay.
Medicaid billing, because we pay a company to do the billing for us. So those are usually annual reoccurring within the articles.
Oh, okay.
The assessors' revaluation is in there, too.
Okay.
All set, Counselor?
Oh, and also, you mentioned property and casualty costs. How does Foster Street affect that?
Because it's really difficult here.
The property and casualty insurance costs, how does Foster Street being in mothballs affect that?
I don't, I don't think it has really any impact at all. I think it's been closed for a number of years. I know we were leasing it to, I want to say Foster Hope, Circle of Hope.
Center of Hope.
Okay, Center of Hope. But I don't think that had any significant reduction, and frankly, that building, as you know, doesn't have a lot of value to it.
I know, but...
So it would not have any significant impact on our rates.
All set, Counselor?
Thank you.
Counselor Claire?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to get my microphone over here. Just a quick question, so with the, now that I lost my page, when we're talking about the expenses to the town, in the final numbers that you have here, that's not taking, that's not taking potential union negotiations into effect yet.
There's money in the budget that deals with that, but it's not within those town department lines, but there is money set aside for that in this budget.
Okay, that's good, thank you. And one more. No, actually, I think that was it, thank you.
Thank you. Citizen? State your name and...
Yes, Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Avenue. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the town manager's budget and his foresight into looking at getting us off the Casella money, is an important subject of mine. And I look forward to giving more input at the subcommittee meetings. And under budget consideration, I wish the subcommittee meetings would consider the possibility of televising the subcommittee meetings so that we can hear more of the budget details. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen that would like to address the council?
Good evening, Mike Marketti, on 20 Maria Avenue. I heard the town manager say that he was reducing the landfill royalty funds, the use of the funds by about $30,000. And that doesn't seem like very much to me. I know that he mentioned that the state had cut back on some funds of $24,000, and he called that minor. So I would say $30,000 is pretty minor, and I think it should be cut even more than that. That's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, and frankly, I really appreciate those comments, and frankly, I would love to do that. And if I didn't have to deal with the $850,000 free cash problem, that's exactly what I would be doing. I cut $30,000 from that just to show that it's important, because it is important. And we could cut more, but that would mean more of a tax increase. So, you know, I think that, you know, we have to kind of bite this off in chunks each year. And this is the first year that deals with the $850,000. Next year, as I said, the problem is going to be $900 and something thousand dollars to get off of that portion of the Casella money. So, Mike, this is going to be a multi-year progress to get what you want, but we just can't do it all in one year.
Well, I know we're not supposed to be debating this, but I know that there is a problem up there with the landfill, the problem with residents' wellwaters being contaminated. All the evidence seems to be pointing towards the landfill. I'm not saying it is the landfill, but the evidence is pointing there, so it just seems to me that, I don't, it just seems kind of callous to care more about his budget than to care about poisoning people's wellwaters. Thank you.
Again, I agree that we shouldn't be debating, but I want to make it clear, this is not about my budget. This is about the taxpayers of Southbridge and what they can afford. As you said, this is going to be a net 2.67% tax increase. Absolutely, we could raise taxes more to help get away from that Casella money. It's not about my budget, it's about the citizens of Southbridge and how much we can do all at once. So I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Is there any other citizens that would like to address the council at this time? Is there any other questions from the counselors? Counselor Steves?
Actually, I had one, but kind of following up on that landfill royalty money. Could you come up with a kind of a chart for us going into the budget discussions of what, like, how much each, how much each amount cut from the landfill royalties would actually affect the tax rate?
So let's talk about it, and again, I don't want to debate the landfill, but I'm going to give you a...
Mr. Town Manager, can I just interrupt? If we can, if you can just answer his initial question, which is, can you present a sheet for him? I think it would be good, because I really don't want to go into debating the items here. This is a presentation.
So here's the answer. I understand. So I gave you guys a sheet of landfill revenues that come to the town.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Those are all the revenues of the next couple of years that we're going to have to make up, right? So I don't know how you guys are going to choose to do that in future years. As I said to you, next year, my opinion right now would be to go after that $930,000, to start working on that next year. Some of those revenues, though, are different, because some of those revenues, we can actually eliminate some expenses for, right? So we know that some of the positions within the health department are funded by landfill revenues. So if the landfill closes, we'll no longer need those positions, and we can reduce those. We're not going to have to deal, those will not be tough things to deal with in the budget, right? But I'm going to, I'm going to kind of give you some news that I received in a general sort of way. As I, and again, I'm not going to debate the landfill tonight, but I've been notified by Mr. Casella that due to the timing of the permitting process, for, as you guys know, there's a lot of talk about doing the triangle and some other slices up there, during the permitting process is going to take some time. There's concern that the landfill could close within a year. The question that Mr. Casella has said to me, and we're going to talk about it later when I get more information, is he's already talking about reducing the amount of tonnage to that landfill right away. Would that mean there'll be some additional revenue cuts that we will have to deal with right away? But I have a solution for that. Once I know what those numbers are, we'll have more conversation about that in the near future.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I really didn't answer the question I asked, but honestly, that really didn't answer the question I asked. What I was simply asking for...
The numbers are, you have the numbers for how much we have to cut from the Casella...
No, I know the grand total. What I was asking is, if, for example, you could just lay out, just give us a layout of, say, if we were to cut $100,000, $200,000, $300,000, what would that, what kind of an impact would that have on the tax rate if we were to decide to cut more than just the $30,000 off Casella royalty funds this year? That's what I was asking.
So every...
I just want to know what it would look like.
Let me ask Karen, because you're talking about for every so many thousand we cut off the revenue from landfill, how much more would it increase taxes, right?
Yes, exactly.
So if I recall, a quarter percent was around $40,000, right, for what we were were talking about? 40,000 for a quarter percent? So for every $40,000 of landfill revenue you took away, you would have to increase taxes by 20, a quarter percent?
24%?
A quarter, 25%.
25, thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Okay? So, so if we wanted to reduce it from 930 to 890, you would have to increase taxes to 4%?
Okay, thank you.
That make sense?
Yes.
So you can use that and calculate that as far as you like?
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is adjournment. Can I have a motion?